Now five o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If Clerk Segrist could call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
From where you located?
In Canton.
You have to identify where you're calling from.
Canton Township, administration building.
Summer Foster.
Good evening from Canton Township.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening from Canton Township on Ledwood Drive.
Clerk Segrist, let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance and in his office here at beautiful Canton Township. Slavens.
You're to Dan.
I see that you are here and you are also in your office.
I apologize. Good evening. I'm in Canton Township at my office, Township Hall.
I'm here in Canton Township.
And finally, Williams.
Supervisor Williams in Canton Township Administration Building. Call for the adoption or a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G three, which is authorizing a budget amendment, purchase order for Wayne County Health Department drive-through COVID testing center.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, motion, vote in favor of, or against.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Call for motion to approve a single set of minutes from the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting.
And this is with the amendment, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Supervisor, so that we can add the location to the meeting, to everyone's location for the twenty seventh?
Yes, sir.
So at roll call, will you, would it be appropriate to ask if, if, if once somebody indicates whether they support the motion or, or not, that they also say where they were on the twenty seventh, the previous meeting? Now, John, trustee Anthony, you were, you were not in attendance, I believe.
Correct.
So you don't need to give an answer about where you were.
Yeah.
Does that sound good, Mr. Supervisor?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, so, so moved.
Okay, those in favor, by roll call vote, yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Sorry. Foster.
Hi, and I was in Canton Township.
Okay. Graham Hudek.
Hi, Canton Township.
Lovely. Segrist, aye, Canton Township. Sorry, this is challenging. Slavens.
Hi, and I was in Canton Township.
All right. Snyderman.
I am Canton Township.
All right, Anne Williams.
Hi, and I was in Canton Township, as per clarification. Trustee Anthony did support the motion approving the minutes, however, he was not present at the previous meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, now would be this time in our agenda for any citizens not agenda comments. So if there's anybody on the line who would like to speak or make public comment, now would be the time to do that. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? If you're on a cell phone and you hit star nine, that'll flag us otherwise in the chat room. If you'd like to make a comment, you should raise your hand. Clerk Segrist, do you see anybody that'd like to make public comment?
We have four attendees. I have a hand raised.
Okay.
From Amina, I see two As, so I'm going to assume it's Amina Ahmed, but I might be wrong. Shall I allow her to talk?
Please, please, I would ask that the speaker, limited comments in three minutes, please.
Permission has been granted. You have the floor.
Amina, would you like to speak?
Hi, I just, uh, this is, um, yeah, this is Amina Ahmed from Canton Township. I just wanted to speak in appreciation of Supervisor Pat Williams. Um, I'm not, you know, I sort of introduced myself as just a mom in the community, but I've known the supervisor for a number of years, um, from back when he was a trustee. And I've really appreciated the way he's kept his doors open. He's kept himself very accessible. Um, I've met with him on a number of occasions as an individual, and at times I've brought messages to him from other community members. And I've always appreciated how respectful and open he's been, as well as being an active listener. And he's never failed to, um, to help. He's never failed to attend events that we've invited him to at the local masjid. And besides that, you know, even if you run into him around the community, he's not one of those people who ignores you because you're not his best friend. He actually is very warm and welcoming, and I really appreciate that. And if I have a little bit of time, I would also like to express words of gratitude to trustee John Anthony, who I met, uh, way back when at a Plymouth, I don't even remember. I think at a Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion Focus Group. And he at that time told me that I should not stop speaking up and that I should not shy away from representing my community or my concerns. And I've always kept those words close to heart. He and I didn't know each other at all at the time, but I really appreciate the way he acted as a very wise mentor to me and many others in the community. And I know I speak for many people when I say we will miss Supervisor Williams and trustee Anthony on this board. And I hope that we're able to keep in touch with them as, as they remain community leaders, which I'm sure they will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very, very kind. Thank you, Amina. Is there any other public comment, Michael? Do you see any other raised hands? I'm raising. No, no other raised hands, Mike?
No other raised hands.
Okay, very good. Treasurer Slavens, call for motion to pay the bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Very good. Those in favor of the motion, by roll call vote.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi.
Uh, now we're going to move into a presentation and public hearing on the adoption of a fiscal year twenty twenty one budgets. So for that, we have a motion to go into a public hearing or to model resolution, or do we go presentation for?
Looks like open hearing, accept public comment, close hearing, and then resolution. That's what the, the model resolution says, that that's.
Very good, yeah, so. Please call for motion to go into public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget at five oh eight.
Support.
Very good. Okay, we received in our deck, uh, a resolution that presents the twenty twenty one budget. I'm sorry. Uh, we had a public hearing, um, proposed twenty twenty one budget, October twenty ninth. Public hearing proposed budget was held again on November tenth, which is today. Is there anything, Wendy, that you would like to add to what was presented in the deck?
No, there haven't been any changes to what we discussed back, um, on the twenty ninth, um, or twentieth, whatever day it was, a few weeks ago. Um, so everything's a status quo, unless there's any questions.
Well, I guess, well, is there any, uh, participants online that have a raised hand that would have any questions regarding the budget for twenty twenty one?
I see no hands raised.
So seeing no public questions or comments at this time, is there any trustee comments or questions for Wendy at this time? Or the other directors who are online with us?
I'll just make a brief.
Yeah, please.
If I may, um, this was not an, an easy year to prepare, uh, a budget. It helps that we do multi-year budgeting, which I think is something that this township should be very, very proud of, that we do that. It takes some of the, the, the challenge away, but I know that finance was pushed pretty, pretty hard this year to pull this together under the existing circumstances. And the supervisor is also responsible for pulling together the annual budget. So, uh, please pat yourselves on the back, on your back for the work that you've done. Additionally, uh, you know, this group has, it's been a long priority now of the township to pay down the unfunded liabilities that we've had for, that had accrued to a very large amount, uh, years ago. And not only have we been meeting our payments, but we've budgeted excess payments and, and have used those, um, additional, um, surpluses to pay down those, those, those obligations. And I think that that speaks to the strategic vision of, uh, this administration. Um, and, uh, and I think it's, it's smart. It's been good for the taxpayers and the residents of Canton Township. So I appreciate that work from the past, and, and I think it's built into this budget. It's, it's good to see. This is a good organization. And I'm, I'm quite proud, proud of, of the work that we've done. So Supervisor Williams, Director Trumbull, everybody on the board, obviously, but specifically, you two can pat yourselves. And then I see Carolyn Cox on here as well, so pat yourselves on the back, um, for a job well done.
So. Any additional comments?
Thank you, Michael.
Any additional comments? Okay, excellent. Call for the motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing at five eleven.
Second.
Roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi.
Okay, we've got a pretty significant motion here. Clerk Segrist, good luck.
This is the largest motion. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the, uh, resolution as presented. Through the public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget.
Support.
Roll call motion to approve the motion as presented.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi.
Moving on to the general calendar, first item up, item G one, consider approval of a purchase order to Owen Tree Services for the twenty twenty tree removal program.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Owen Tree Services Incorporated at two two five North Lake George Road in Attica, Michigan, four eight four one two, from the account number listed for maintenance and repair grounds, tree maintenance in an amount totaling twenty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Support.
Okay, in summary, to keep Canton owned parks and grounds groomed, tree maintenance and removal is necessary. Leisure services staff solicited two quotes from tree maintenance removal from two tree companies that have current service contracts with us. We are recommending Owen Tree Services to remove any dead or fallen trees identified on township-owned properties, including Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Courses and vacant land adjacent to homeowners on Cavalier Street. Are there any questions for Director Holenberger on this item? No raised hands in the audience?
I see none.
Pretty routine. Okay, very good. Any board council questions for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, roll call, uh, vote on the motion.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Item G two, consider approval, emergency purchase order to replace rooftop unit number one at the summit on the park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the emergency purchase order for the replacement of RTU, RTU number one for the summit on the park to Goyet or Goyer or Boucher, I don't, Mechanical, three eight four two Gory Avenue, PO box three, Flint, Michigan, four eight five oh one, in the amount of twenty five thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars to be paid from the account number listed for Community Improvement Plan.
Support.
There's a background, uh, the unit at Summit on the Park is original. The building, making it twenty five plus years old, passed its life expectancy. Once inspected, it was determined the frame of the unit was cracked, causing it to be inoperable. Cost to repair the frame was, would have been between five and ten thousand dollars. As one of the items identified in the capital improvement plan under the line item Summit on the Park Mechanical Units, with a budget of four hundred and forty thousand, we're recommending that the unit be replaced at this time as a subset of that line. Any questions for Director Holenberger on this item? Go ahead, Stevens.
Um, did we have another one recently? I'm trying to remember that we had to do.
Not at the summit. We had some administrative building, and then, uh, I believe last meeting, we had, um, the, what was it, the heat exchangers on the units at Fellows Creek Golf Course as well.
Oh, wow. When it rains, it pours. Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've got a lot of units and a lot of old units.
Thanks.
Saying no other council questions, uh, roll call, vote on the motion.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi.
Now the add-on item G three, consider authorizing, authorizing a budget amendment and purchase order to the Wayne County Health Department drive-through COVID testing center.
I see this, uh, motion, this resolution has three motions. I'm going to do my best to make them all one motion.
Correct.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Dane, Danjo Construction at five seven eight one Sheldon Road here in Canton, Michigan, four eight one eight eight, for a total of twenty four thousand, forty three dollars to be paid from the account number listed, Professional Contractual Services, Professional Contingent, upon the signing, uh, a con, signed agreement with Wayne County. I authorize the township supervisor to sign the aforementioned agreement with Wayne County and approve the, amend the budget as follows. Increase in revenue to the contributions from local units account, amount of twenty four thousand, forty three dollars, and increase expenses concurrently in the Professional Contractual Services in the same amount of twenty four thousand and forty three dollars.
Support.
Very good. Terms of summary, uh, myself and, uh, after Commissioner Dobbs reached out to us, Wayne County Commissioner, uh, to create a plan to, um, for a future free drive-up COVID testing site. After some discussion, it was determined that the best identified location for the site would be our former Western Wayne Narcotic Building located at forty four, five eighty two Geddes Road, which is owned by Canton Township. It has an adequate, uh, space for traffic control. There are some slight improvements that are necessary. Canton Asphalt Service Contractor, Dan Joe Construction, reviewed and quoted three possible options for the site detailed in the attached memo, which was part of the board packet. One of the three options, Wayne County Health identified option one as being their preferred, uh, traffic flow through the site. And so Canton Township is agreeing to pay Dan Joe Construction for the site improvements with the intent of Wayne County Health Department reimbursing, uh, the township upon being invoiced. And it was confirmed in writing by Wayne County staff that the funding had been approved, uh, once the work is complete and paid. So, uh, do we have any questions for Director Holenberger at this time? And, and this is a proposed, um, COVID test site that will be free to everybody in the union, or the region, I should say. Um, the date and timing is still not clear because the county has gone as far as they have in terms of funding approvals. The next step for them is to determine the design and layout of the facilities, um, and finalize that, uh, before they'll go to work. So Greg, I don't know if you've got anything to add in terms of timing?
No, I don't. I, I know they want to, um, from the discussions today, want to get started on the construction of the gravel queuing line, which is basically that twenty four thousand dollars as soon as possible, so they can get up and running. Um, but I'm not sure what their target date is yet.
And the, the part of the emphasis, obviously, for Canton Township is the, the increasing, um, new cases in our community. So that's why they're prioritizing Canton Township for sites. Any questions, comments, and ready?
Yeah, I noticed it. CVSes, you see a lot of the, um, free testing happening in Canton now. And I was wondering, for this particular site, do they have to make appointments or just get in line at a certain time?
What I've seen right now is they just literally show up. But again, it's, I, I don't want to make commitments on behalf of Wayne County Health. So what we are doing, our role here is I help to identify the site, prepare the site, um, in terms of maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the site, which is our facility anyways, for snowfalling, um, that kind of thing, cleaning indoor portions of the facilities, uh, if that's being utilized, that'll be our responsibility. Everything else at Wayne County is put together. So I think we need to, once this is done, he gets, uh, Greg gets the site work done, then we could go back to Wayne County through more details, uh, through the Health Department. And Melissa Dobbs has been great to work with on, on this topic all the way through. Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to say I'm really happy to hear that they're going to put, uh, it in Canton Township with the numbers climbing and that. This is fantastic, so.
Michael.
Yeah, I also support the idea. I have another question, Mr. Supervisor. Had, had we discussed what the long-term plan for this parcel of property might be?
I, the, once it was vacated, uh, we took, took a look at it organizationally, the different functional areas, department heads, directors kind of looked at it and said, mm, don't need it, don't, they don't have a need for the facility. Um, so Kristen Thomas was in the process of preparing to sell it, look, put it up for sale to see if, you know, if there was interest on the market. Obviously, if there was any movement there, it would have come back to the board for approval before anything actually happened. Um, so she was getting, uh, the realtors lined up, listed, and when Melissa Dobbs reached out to me and said, hey, do we have someplace in Canton? And lo and behold, it became this site. So that put Kristen Thomas on hold in terms of selling the lot, the property, or trying to sell it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Greg, or Stevens.
Um, I didn't get a chance to really look at the, the options there. Um, I saw you went with option three. And my only concern is I, I can't really tell, like, how traffic is going to be handled. Is this going to back traffic up onto Geddes Road, Geddes Road at all? I, I do know that I did hear that this weekend, the, the, um, one, or on Monday, the, the testing center at Plymouth Township Hall, or the complex next to it, was like an hour and a half wait. And so I don't know how many cars that means, but, um, yeah, that's my concern.
Well, the, it's actually option one is what we're going with, not out of degree. And that allows for fifty cars in the queue. And then in terms of if there's going to be backup, Geddes is not a terrific place for their backup to be compared to Michigan Roundtable or other locations. But if we get into a hundred, two hundred cars, um, it could be cumbersome, but well, and then what would happen then was we'll probably have to go to, like Greg has done with a lot of programming, see, is set up appointment. That's how, like, for example, St. Joe's, you never see a huge line up there because you have an appointment.
Okay.
And that, that defers the backups.
Yeah, and, and just to add to that, uh, supervisor, um, some of the discussion we've had with the contractor is based on width of the gravel, um, we may be able to actually do a, a double line for queuing, and the way they're going to set up the, um, the trailer in the parking lot, they'll be able to do, um, testing out of both sides of the trailer. So they'll be able to service two people at the same time, one on each side of the trailer. Um, so if we're able to do that, that would double our capacity, so there, there is potential for that. But we're kind of, we went with the, the base minimum of fifty, but could be as many as hundred cars if we're able to set it up that way.
And, and that's what I did in St. Joe's, or, yeah, St. Joe's facility. Uh, wife and I got tested, pulled in, four minutes later, we're pulling out. Very fast. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, uh, call for a roll call vote on the motion.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi.
Okay, that concludes, I believe, our official business for this evening. Any staff comments at this time? Greg or Chris, could you give us a little update of what's happening out there, um, what your teams are seeing?
Sure, so, um, as everybody's been watching the news, we know that we've got an uptick, right, um, in the state. And, uh, we're no different here in Canton. We're watching the same exact thing happen. Um, our crews are seeing anywhere from five to ten patients a day, um, that are either COVID positive or suspected COVID positive. Um, so we're, um, back to where we were at as far as, um, burning through a lot of PPE and trying to acquire more PPE for the, for the protection of the workers. Um, we know that we have an outbreak in another one of our nursing facilities. Um, we had a conference call with them today as well. So now, um, like we had implemented in one of our nursing homes earlier in the year, um, we're implementing in this, in, um, one of the nursing homes here again, our assisted living homes, um, where we're going to be donning full PPE, meaning gown, gloves, the eye shields, all that stuff, every time we enter that building, just because we know that, um, there's an outbreak inside there. So, um, once again, it'll, um, you know, create a little bit of, um, anxiety and stress from the firefighters, and we're going to continue to, to do what we do. Um, but other than that, we need to make sure that, uh, we're protecting all the employees. The executive leadership group met, um, yesterday and had some discussion on that with the new MDHHS rules and Myosha rules that have come out. And we're going to continue the screening at the front door, um, of the Township Hall, and we'll continue to, uh, monitor that. Now we're going to also be doing, um, tracing for, um, anybody that's visiting the, um, facility as well. Um, and that's a requirement from both MDHHS and Myosha. So we'll continue to, on that path, just to keep the employees safe. Um, nothing in there says that we have to do screenings, per se. We just have to, um, basically keep track of, um, who's visiting us and the date and time of, of their visits and their phone numbers. Uh, but we're just taking a little bit step further, since we're going to have somebody there to record those, um, those visitors. Uh, we figured this, uh, probably a good practice is to continue to screen them. So, um, that's the game plan for the township at this point. And we'll continue to monitor and, and make sure that, uh, we keep the employees safe, so both police, fire, and township-wide.
Thank you, Chris. Any other staff comments, updates at this time? Okay, uh, board comments or questions, or statements? Go ahead, Dan.
I just, I wanted to, um, thank Supervisor Williams, uh, for all his years of service, um, to the residents of Canton Township, his eight years as trustee and his four years as supervisor. And thank your family for allowing you to be in office, um, and I wish all the best to you and your family. And I'd also like to thank our senior trustee, uh, trustee Anthony. He has been, um, he has the most institutional knowledge of all of us. He's been a trustee for twelve years, and I want to thank him so much, uh, for all, uh, his service to Canton Township. And, um, I wish all the best to you and your family in the glorious. So thank you both so much.
Thank you very much. All right, go ahead, Stevens.
Well, I'm going to echo those comments. Um, thank you both. I've enjoyed serving with you both for the last eight years. Um, Pat, you always answer your phone. You're always there, uh, when, uh, someone calls, and including me, um, to have a discussion on whatever the topic is. And, um, I've enjoyed working with you the last eight years. We haven't always agreed on every topic, but we've had good discussions about them, and I've appreciated that. And, uh, John, uh, I think Amina said it well, you are a very encouraging man, and I really appreciated that the last eight years. Um, I, I've, I've really enjoyed becoming friends with you and, and working with you. You have been a great customer.
I, I've, I've really enjoyed becoming friends with you and, and working with you. You have been a great colleague toward this. So I wish you both the best.
Thank you. Sorry.
Um, just to echo everything that's been said, Pat, I really appreciate your open door policy as supervisor and always being willing to talk things through. I'm sure probably four years ago, when we were both elected to new positions, you probably didn't think that you would agree with me or that I would agree with you as much as we have. But I think together, we've gotten a lot of really good things done for the Township. And so I've really appreciated working with you and getting to know you. And I wish you the best and wish Nancy and your kids and grandkids the best. And John, I haven't, I, I've worked with you for the last four years. I haven't gotten a chance to visit your office. It's important. But I do, I, I have enjoyed working with you and I wish you and Gloria the best.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, guys, that was a great run. Mike, you, go ahead, Mike.
You got, you're, you got to talk last, Pat.
Okay, I thought we were done. Okay.
Or John, whichever one decides. But thank you. I've been thinking over the last week what I wanted to say. You know, what a, what a, what an amazing four years we've had. Obviously, I'm going to make some very good, really touching comments and it got me a little sentimental. And hearing all the trustees talk about, talk about your qualities, your qualifications, your commitment to this community. I mean, it's all true. I, you exhausted me with how responsive you were to the residents, how involved you were, how you put your finger on the pulse of this community. I don't know many residents in Michigan or the United States that could say that their chief elected official was as active and involved in trying to make their lives better. So you can, you can carry that with you for the rest of your life, knowing that you worked extremely hard for this community. And, and, you know, John, you're the funniest person I've ever worked with on a board. I have giggled so hard at the comments you've made. You're on my election commission and you've asked some really tough questions. But, you know, you're on the ethics commission where we, we did that ordinance and I've really gotten to know you well. And I'm going to really miss serving with, with both of you. I, I, I really am going to miss both of you so much. And yeah, that's a statement I probably didn't think I would have made four years ago at all. And God, John, like when you told me my politics are crazy, but you, but you said I run a good election. That was a huge compliment to me. I mean, you're wrong about the politics part, but about the election was just amazing. And coming from you, that means a lot. And you know, this country right now is, is torn in two. It is not a healthy dialogue at the state. It is not a healthy dialogue at, at the national level. And how people are processing this election is not healthy and it's going to have disaster. It's going to have dangerous consequences for the future. But I, I am, I'm so proud of you too. I'm proud of this community because of who we are. We are a very diverse community, but we, we, and this has been a very tumultuous year in general, outside of politics, around race. And, and we, we didn't have a lot of that. We didn't have a lot of, like, we didn't have racial violence. We didn't have a lot of that going on. And I think that speaks to the effort that you, you've put in place, that we've all put in place. This is a special place. And, and, and Pat, you've been a special supervisor and John, you've been here all along helping us. I am just really going to miss you both. I'm really grateful for the work that you've done. And I was thinking, one of my favorite quotes is from Teddy Roosevelt, one of the best, you know, a Republican president. And it came to my mind, and so I just want to leave with this, which I've told myself many times, when I felt like I've spent myself in an effort that didn't necessarily go or didn't get the appreciation or, you know, like right now, I'm getting these phone calls about the election and it's just, you're getting beat up, right? And, but it's, it says, it's not the critic who counts. Not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, who faces, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errors, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who, but who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who at the, at best knows in the end, the triumph of high achievement or who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. You know, both of you have known great triumph and high achievement. And I've spent yourself in some worthy efforts here. That quote came to mind when I was thinking about the conversation I was going to have with you. This may be our, this will be our last board meeting and it will not be the same. So just know what both of you mean to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Amber?
Thank you. John, it was a pleasure sitting next to you on the board. I really enjoyed coming in each time and talking to you. And I really liked working with you. It was great working with you on the ethics committee. That was a lot of fun, a lot of side conversations that we had. So I really appreciate everything that you've done for the community. And thank you so much for your time and I hope you and Gloria and your family have many happy endeavors to come. And I hope to see you in the evenings on the golf course because now we'll be able to see each other a little bit more out there. And next summer, of course, we're, but I really enjoyed working with you. So thank you for all your time. And Pat, the same. Thank you very much for all the time you've given to the community. Thank you very much for all the efforts that you put into everything and the compassion and thoughtfulness. And I really appreciate everything you've done. And so I wish you luck in your coming years, you and Nancy and the kids and grandkids. And I'm sure we will be seeing each other a lot still in Canton and working on things in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, to all of the new board coming in, I have the utmost confidence that Canton Township will continue to grow and expand. And I feel very comfortable with the new board and where they're, they're, where they're going in their expertise. Thank you all very much. You've been very gracious to myself and to Gloria during some difficult times. And I, I can't thank you all enough. And I really, really believe we have a good, a good board going forward. It's a new time for Canton. It's a new board and I think you'll do well. One last thing, I'd like to wish the United States Marine Corps, their 245th anniversary is today. They were formed back in 1775. And I've been lucky to be a part of that organization for six years in a, in a previous life. And also tomorrow is Veterans Day. I'd like to wish all the veterans, wherever they are, those who are currently serving and those who have served. It is because of them that we're able to have the freedoms we have and to have the elected officials that we have today. So congratulations to the United States Marine Corps on your 245th anniversary. And congratulations to all veterans everywhere.
And I guess use it back to me now to wrap up. And I absolutely no prepared speeches. This board has been amazing in terms of what we have accomplished. We have, we've changed the history and the trajectory of Canton Township as a group. And it was not just, you know, myself or just the trustees, it was the directors, the stuff that happened in our community with racial strife and how Chad stepped up, recycling has extended the life, large bin recycling we introduced, extends the life of the landfill, saves our residents tremendous amount of money going forward. After 20 years of water and sewer rate increases, Jade and his team, we were able to deliver reductions in water and sewer rates. That's insane these days. The roads program, to bring, you know, bipartisan, both sides together for a common cause for our community is unheard of. And I, and I remember when Summer and, Summer and Mike were the first ones, hey, Pat, we're thinking about, what do you think? And I, like I always do, I fight first and then I think about it a little bit. It's like, hey. And then we called in some people from the other side of the aisle and, you know, pulled it off. It was a huge undertaking. And, and we again changed the trajectory for Canton Township. It was unbelievable. What else? The financial health, the status. We're in great shape. There are so many communities around us that are struggling day in, day out. We're in a position where you know, our employees could take a deep breath and be satisfied that they're working, you know, for an employer who's got their back financially. You can support them going forward as well as the residents knowing that the service levels have always been maintained. So we've done a great deal in a very surreal time together. And there's no one individual. It's everybody that's on this call. And then the hundreds of employees underneath too, that help deliver day in, day out. It's amazing. So I am leaving feeling very good about what we've accomplished. I have no idea what the future holds for Nancy and I. But I, heart and soul, I believe, you know, the big guy's got a program out there for us. I just don't know what it looks like. So we're going to take a little deep breath, sort that out. And I'm sure at some level, you'll continue to be involved in the community. So it's been a great ride, hell of a ride. And thank you guys for helping me have a successful ride, right? Because again, you know, couldn't have done it by myself. We needed all of us to get this done. And we did it. It was amazing. Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn this at the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, vote on the motion.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Hey, Amber, you got it. Good to go.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Goodbye.